Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of January the 19th, 2016. Roll call, please.
Chair Johnson.
Here.
Vice Chair Chase. Commissioner Biassoti.
Here.
Commissioner Kayal.
Present.
Commissioner Mishra.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson. Commissioner Samoud.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Commissioner Samoud, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every keenest justice for all.
Thank you. Just a few reminders before we get started at our meeting. Staff reports are located on the back of the table, and home viewers can obtain the agenda at the SanBruno.ca.gov website. Also, all planning commission meetings are recorded and they're replayed on Thursday, following Thursday, on the cable TV Channel 1. And lastly, we ask that you please silence your telephones and keep them remained on silence, and if you can, please take any phone calls outside of the chambers. And all questions, if you can, direct them, please, to the commission. Thank you. All right, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. We have two minutes this evening, and we'll need two motions. One, the first one we'll do is for November the 17th, 2015.
Yeah, through the chair, I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes as written. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, motion carries. The next minutes will be for December the 15th, 2015.
Through the chair. Motion that we approve the minutes for December 15th, 2015.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Okay. And item, the next item is communications.
Chair Johnson, there are no additional communications this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Item number three are for items that are not on the agenda, so if you have an item that you would like to bring forward, we ask that you please step to the podium, and these are items that are not on this evening's agenda. Okay, hearing ended, we'll move forward. And is there any conflict of interest from any of the commission? Okay. All right. The first item of business is 460 Hazel Avenue. It is a request for a use permit to allow the construction of 111 square foot, two-story addition at the north, at the north side of the building, resulting in a gross floor area of 2935 square foot, square feet, excuse me, where 2750 is allowed, and provide only one parking space for an expansion of a residence that is greater than 1,825 square feet per sections 12.200-030-B2 and 12.200-080-A2 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. Staff report, please.
Good evening, commissioners, Michael Smith, Planning Department staff. The subject property is located on Hazel Avenue between Genovane and Clark Avenues and the Huntington Park subdivision. The subject lot measures 5,000 square feet in area and is currently developed with a two-story, single-family dwelling that has three bedrooms and three full bathrooms, one garage parking space, and another parking space located on the pad beside the driveway within about 2,800 square feet of floor area, including the garage. The home was constructed in 1936. The applicant is proposing to construct a 111-square-foot, two-story addition on the north side of the building. The new addition would provide interior stairway access between the second and, second floor of the building and the ground floor. The addition would have multiple shed roofs that are clad in composition shingles that match the existing roofing materials. The addition itself would be clad in stucco that matches the existing exterior finishes of the building. The project requires a use permit because it exceeds the maximum permitted FAR for the district at .587 FAR, where 2750 is permitted. And it's also requesting a use permit to allow one off-street parking space for the expansion that is greater than 1,825, where the code would require two. The addition would extend seven feet from the building's north side elevation but would be located within a side yard that is substantially set back from the front of the building and located behind a fence. Thus, it would not be readily visible from the street and would not affect the visual character of the neighborhood. Furthermore, the addition would be finished in materials stucco and composition shingle roofing that matched the existing building's existing finished materials to provide visual unity in the design. The addition would serve the purpose of creating an internal stairway connection between the ground floor rooms and the primary living level on the second floor. The connection would make the overall building more usable and make it more difficult to use the ground floor rooms independently as an unwarranted second dwelling unit. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve this use permit based on findings 1 through 6 and subject to conditions of approval 1 through 26 as outlined in the staff report. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions for staff? Thank you for your report. We'll now open the public hearing, and if the applicant can please step forward, state your name and your street, yes, please, to the podium. If you don't mind, please lower the microphone to your comfort level.
Thank you. My name is Ellen Hartog. I'm the architect, and I do want to point out that I tried to break up the mass such that the second floor area is less than 70 square feet, and the roof lines, the existing roof line is extended, so it blends in and is not obtrusive to anyone. It's in the rear of the law, of the building itself such that it is not impacting any windows from the adjacent neighbor.
Thank you.
Also, as he, as Michael has pointed out, we've tried to match the existing style as well.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for the applicant? Thank you for your presentation. We'll now open it to anyone in the audience or in the public who wishes to speak on this matter. Okay, hearing ended, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to Planning Commission discussion.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Mishra.
I'd like to move that the Planning Commission approved use permit 15-25 based on findings of fact 1 through 6 and subject to conditions of approval 1 through 26.
Second. Second.
There was a silent second on this end. Biassoti, please give us a second. Okay. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Ten-day appeal period.
The next item, oh, thank you for reminding me. There is a ten-day appeal period before any action can take place on this project. You're welcome.
Thanks for the note.
The next item is 1250 Grundy Lane. It is a request for an amendment to a develop, to a development plan, a planned development permit, and an architectural review permit to allow the construction of a new 67,586 square foot, three-story office building with 215 parking spaces for chapter 12.136, 12.96.190, and 12.108 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. Staff report, please.
Thank you, and good evening. As indicated, the applicant is planning to construct a 67,586 square foot office building within the existing Bay Hill Office Park. This new building would serve as the new administrative building for the San Francisco Police Credit Union. Site itself is 1.7 acres in total area and is located on the east side of Grundy Lane. The Bay Hill Office Park contains 1.5 million square feet of office space. As such, the adjoining land uses include primarily three-story office buildings located to the east, west, and across the street to the south. Interstate 380 is located directly to the north of the subject property. The existing zoning designation is PD, which stands for Plan Development, and the general plan land use designation is Regional Office. The site was previously developed with an 8,300-square-foot restaurant that was demolished in May of 2014. It's important to note that that restaurant remained vacant for approximately five years prior to its demolition. As indicated, the applicant is proposing to construct a 67,586 square foot office building. The first floor would be approximately 24,940 square feet and would contain a lobby, bathrooms that would include showers, and a small retail credit union for the San Francisco Police Credit Union members. The first floor would also contain a 16,540 square foot area that would be for future office expansion or for, or would be potential lease space. The second floor measures 20,863 square feet, and the third floor measures 21,782 square feet. Both the second and third floor would contain various workstations, conference and training rooms, as well as staff lounges. Regarding parking, a total of 215 parking spaces are proposed. Specifically, there's 47 surface parking spaces located at surface level, 24 to the north of this subject building and 23 to the east of the building. Additionally, there's two levels of subgrade parking that are proposed. Between those two levels, there's a total of 168 parking spaces. In regards to the hours of operation, on page one within your staff report, there is a mention that the general hours of operation for the office use would be 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and that the credit union would have hours of operation from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Thursday, and 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Fridays. The applicant actually just provided staff with some updated hours of operation, which would be 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, for the general office, and then 8:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, for the retail credit union branch. Staff does not anticipate any negative impacts with the updated hours and is supportive of this change. Regarding the entitlements required for this project, as proposed, an amendment to the existing development plan is required, a plan development permit, and an architectural review permit are also required. This project does require review from the Architectural Review Committee, Planning Commission, ultimate approval from the city council. Regarding to the amendment to the existing development plan, it's important to note that this site has a zoning designation of PD, which stands for Plan Development, and each Plan Development has its own development plan. The current development plan only allows for a restaurant use and does not allow for an office use. Therefore, the development plan associated with this PD zoning district must be amended to allow for an office use. Staff finds that the proposed office, that the proposed amendment is consistent with the Regional Office general land use designation. An architectural review permit is also attached to this proposal. The project was referred to our peer review architect, Larry Cannon. Mr. Cannon did not have any specific design recommendations, rather his recommendations were more in terms, and more focused on site design and improving onsite circulation and pedestrian circulation. A copy of Mr. Cannon's memo is attached as attachment I within the staff report. The Architectural Review Committee also reviewed this project at their November 12th, 2015 meeting. At that meeting, the ARC forwarded the project onto the Planning Commission with minor staff recommendations and Architectural Review Committee recommendations. Those recommendations included providing reflectivity specifications for the proposed aluminum roof screening material, incorporating decorative screening for trash and ground-mounted generators, or for the ground-mounted generator that is compatible with the exterior materials of the building. There was a recommendation that the retain wall and garage wall shall incorporate a high-quality decorative design with an attractive cap element. There was also a recommendation to include an updated detail for all proposed exterior signage. And lastly, there was a recommendation to update the color renderings to accurately reflect proposed landscaping. The applicant has addressed the Architectural Review comments, which are reflected within supplemental information that was submitted to staff and within the revised plans. In terms of overall site layout, I would like to just go over one general plan policy, that's LUD 51, which promotes the construction of professional and administrative office buildings on existing surface parking lots in the Bay Hill Office Park. In this particular case, the applicant's proposing a three-story office building constructed over two levels of subgrade parking. And if you refer to the exhibit up on the screen here, you'll notice that there's two driveways that provide access to the site. The easternmost driveway provides access to the two levels of subgrade parking, and the westernmost driveway provides access to the 47 surface parking spaces. Pedestrian access is achieved primarily through two entrances, the main entrance of which is located at the southwest portion of the building, and then there's a secondary entrance that's located at the northern edge of the building. And I believe there's three elevators throughout this building, as well as two internal stairwells that would connect the subgrade parking garages with the actual building itself. In terms of all, in terms of overall form and articulation, staff finds that the overall building form is consistent with the scale, form, and development pattern of the existing office buildings within the Bay Hill Office Park environment. All four elevations provide varying facade depth. Regarding exterior materials, the majority of the building would incorporate a glass-fiber reinforced concrete precast finish. It would be gray in color. The projecting wall elements would incorporate a rain screen wall that would have a color, they're referring to it as a rusted brown color. All windows would contain a clear anodized finish and would contain aluminum sun shades that measure two feet, six inches deep, which provides additional architectural interest. Overall, staff finds that the proposed exterior materials complement one another in terms of overall finish and color. Regarding landscaping, as you can see, the, the exhibit we have up on the board here is the landscaping plan. A variety of drought-tolerant trees, shrubs, and ground covers are provided throughout the entire site. I would like to point out there's 14 existing heritage trees located on site, which will be removed as a result of this project. The San Bruno Municipal Code requires that any heritage tree removed be replaced with two 24-inch box trees or one 36-inch box tree. In this particular case, the applicant's proposing to construct, or proposing to replant 24 box trees, which exceeds the minimum Municipal Code requirement. In terms of overall signage, there's two primary exterior signs that are proposed, both building-mounted. One sign is proposed along the upper portion of the rear elevation, and an additional sign is proposed along the lower portion of the southern elevation. The proposed signage would include the typical San Francisco Police Credit Union logo, would be internally illuminated, would also be approximately four inches, would have a depth of four inches, so it does provide that depth, and it will look pretty sharp at night with the internal illumination. In terms of the environmental analysis and SEQA, in accordance with California Environmental Quality Act, the city contracted with Rainy Planning and Management for the preparation of a draft initial study and mitigated negative declaration. The study also included a detailed traffic study prepared by Crane Transportation Group. The initial study and mitigated negative, analyzed the required elements and determined that the proposed project would not have an significant effect on the environment with the incorporation of mitigation measures. A total of eight mitigation measures were included, and those mitigation measures are included within the environmental document itself, the mitigation monitoring, the reporting program, as well as they were included within the conditions of approval for the project. I would like to note that Nick Papani representing Rainy Planning and Management and Mark Crane representing Crane Transportation Group are in attendance tonight and would be available to answer any specific questions to that topic, the SEQA topic. I'd also like to just briefly touch on the transportation demand management plan that the applicant is proposing. The applicant, well, and the overall intent of the TDM plan is to reduce the number of vehicle trips to and from the subject site and to really promote and encourage the use of transit and alternative means of transportation. I don't want to go over every single measure that the applicant's proposing, but I wanted to highlight a few. One is that the applicant is committing to subsidizing transit tickets for those employees taking public transportation up to a minimum of $50 per month. Two, they will participate in the existing shuttle service that's operated by Walmart.com. Additionally, they'll be providing lockable bike storage on site, and lastly, they'll be providing showers with changing rooms. In terms of neighborhood outreach, the applicant held a neighborhood meeting on November 4th, 2015, at the Marriott Courtyard in the Bay Hill Office Park environment. Two members of the public were in attendance. There's basic questions regarding number of, number of proposed parking spaces, the overall construction schedule, and potential tenants for the leasable spaces. Additionally, staff did send a notice to all property owners within the Bay Hill Office Park for the Architectural Review Committee, and we sent the required legal notice for the Planning Commission tonight, and we have not received any comments regarding this project. Overall, staff supports the project. We do find that this would be the most significant development within the Bay Hill Office Park environment in quite some time, and we find that it would enhance the overall site in the Bay Hill Office Park, particularly, the sites remain vacant for five years at this point, so it'll be nice to see something constructed there. With that, staff does have a few minor recommendations. One recommendation would be to incorporate between five to 10 bike racks near the main entrance of the building. Secondly, staff would, has a recommendation that the applicant identify the location of the changing room, bike lockers, and dedicated carpool parking spaces within the plans. I would like to point out that the applicant has somewhat already addressed this issue, and staff actually distributed three sheets, and those were PZ-1, PZ-2, and PZ-3 prior to the start of this meeting. Sheet PZ-1 identifies the bike storage locker area and identifies the location of the bike racks towards the main entrance. Sheet PZ-2 identifies the location of the changing room, and sheet PZ-3 identifies the location of the carpool parking spaces. Additionally, staff has a recommendation that the garbage and recycling area measure a minimum of 20 feet wide by 20 feet deep. We have a recommendation that the landscaping plan shall be updated to incorporate a landscaping strip at the base of the trash generator enclosure along the east and west elevation. And lastly, we have a general recommendation to remove all reference details that are found throughout the plans that are not included within the submittal. With these recommendations, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2016-01, recommending that the city council adopt the draft mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Secondly, we'd recommend the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2016-2, recommending the city council approve an amendment to the existing development plan. And lastly, we would recommend adoption of Resolution 2016-03, recommending the city council approved, approve a plan development permit 12-002, and architectural review permit 16-002. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant has prepared a PowerPoint presentation for tonight, but I would be happy to answer any clarifying questions in the meantime. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent presentation.
Thanks.
Any questions for staff? Okay. Thank you. And if the applicant can please step forward and present your project and tell us your team names.
Can someone, can someone advance the slide for me? So we've been working closely with staff for the last couple of years, and Matt, and David, and Public Works, Police and Fire, all the departments have been really helpful and collaborative, moving us through the process and the city's expectations. Most recently, we've been working through the draft conditions of approval together with the credit union and with staff, and I'm happy to confirm that with the modifications that we've discussed, that the credit union accepts the conditions as discussed. A little bit about the use of this building, the credit union is anticipating growth. We're going to grow into this building. It's a new, this new three-story building. Initially, the administration building will house 70 to 80 credit union staff, and the first, first floor will have a small branch of the credit union with the balance reserved for a tenant, for a future tenant. So we, we believe that the initial occupancy of the building will be about 140 occupants and the mass, and will grow over the first 10 to 15 years to a maximum capacity of 210 The development schedule is that we are poised to submit our construction documents for building permit review upon, you know, being advanced to the city council tonight, and we're being, going to be allowed to pursue that concurrently with the entitlement, and we're ready to do that. So we will, we'll start that process immediately. We understand that the, this process will go to the city council, we'll have hearings in both February and March, and we're hoping to achieve building permit in April and begin construction, and construction would be 18 to 24 months, completing in the first quarter of 2018. And I'm going to let my colleague talk about the, the fun part, the pictures.
My name's Dean Wilcoxon. I'm a senior project architect with Newground. First off, I'd really like to take the opportunity and express our appreciation to have the audience this evening. This has been a long time coming, and so there's a lot of excitement on the part of the credit union, part of, you know, the development team. It's, it's been a, you know, a long time coming, and we're looking forward to the project moving forward very successfully. I would also like to commend the staff at the City of San Bruno. Over the last, I don't know how many years it's been now, three, four years, we've developed a very close working relationship, and, you know, I have to point out the fact that all along the way, in working with Matt, David, they've pushed us to turn this building into just a, you know, just a fantastic structure, fantastic facility. I think it's going to be, you know, a great facility within the City of San Bruno, within the Bay Hill Commerce Center. And so, again, with that, what I'd like to do is just very quickly sort of touch upon some of the highlights. I know that between Matt's presentation and Jan's presentation, they've kind of given you the statistics and sort of what we're after. And again, we don't want to belabor the point, but very quickly, we'll move through this. Again, you've had a chance to look at the site plan. One of the things that wasn't really touched upon is that we've taken a lot of concern in looking at how the cars are going to move around the site. It's a very complex project. We've got a site that's very tight, roughly 1.7 acres, that's roughly about 75,000 square feet, and we're putting roughly about 67,000, 68,000 square feet on it. When we started the project, choosing the site was a result of a very extensive search effort. And early on in talking, you know, with the City of San Bruno, it became very clear that one of their sincere interests was that we would be able to increase the FAR density of the project. The previous project, the restaurant, was not achieving that, and I think in this day and age, we understood, you know, the importance of doing that. And so, the building today is, is, represents roughly an FAR over .9. We're allowed one, so I think we've done a pretty good job in meeting that standard. As you look at the site itself, it's a site that currently has a substantial amount of fall across it, and as we started working with the city, one of the factors that played heavily in how we laid the site out was your ordinance 1284. It has a big impact because what it did, in effect, two things, is it limited us from developing what would be called a parking structure, and secondly, it had to do with the overall height of the building. The end result is that what we've done is we've crafted a solution that, in effect, raises the grade up around the entire building, thus, the parking that's underneath the building classifies as subterranean. Likewise, we've maintained the height of the building within the 50-foot overall height, so the three floors, plus with the mechanical units on the roof, we are now under that standard. That was very critical in terms of the overall design of the building, and, you know, as you look at the site itself, and getting back to the, the car access, we're using a shared access road on the east side of the building in terms of getting access to the garage. The parking on the west side in the west lot, we envision that that's going to be used primarily for credit union members, visitors to the building, vendors, people of that nature. It would have free access. The parking north of the building would be assigned, and that ideally would be for employees within the building itself. Moving on to this site plan here, again, this represents in black and white some of the key factors. For example, as you look at the front of the building, we've made For example, as you look at the front of the building, we've made, you know, extensive effort in terms of softing up the wall structures that run along San Bruno on the southeast corner of the property. Again, this was one of the efforts that came about working with the planning department, and we think it improves the look of the building tremendously. As we moved forward with, one of the key issues that came up recently is how we are looking at the trash enclosure, emergency generator enclosure. And part of what we've done is working with staff is, you know, developed a trash enclosure that picks up a lot of the same details, materials as the retaining walls, while at the same time incorporates sort of what's called a green wall in between those. It's a tremendous effort to soften the look of that feature, which, again, this is, you know, one of the things that we've been working with staff on, and we're very proud of where that's going. Moving on to the, very quickly, I'll run through the floor plans. As I said, we have two levels of subterranean parking. These are going to be exclusively for building employees. We do not see any public parking in these buildings. They will have control access on the garage, both in terms of gates, and likewise in terms of grill closures after hours. Moving on to the building, this represents the layout of the first floor. As was mentioned, it is basically initially going to be built more as what would be referred to as shell space. The intent is that initially, the space could be leased out on a limited-time basis. The balance of it represents a microbranch, which, again, we see functioning for outside members while at the same time for employees within the building. As you move on to the other floors, I'll point out that, you know, NewGround has spent a lot of time working with the development of today's office environment, and one of the key features that I think these plans represent is how we've taken the traditional core elements such as bathrooms, offices, conference rooms, and moved them to the interior of the building. Thus, what that does is we're able to use the perimeter in a much more open fashion with open workstations. With the amount of glazing that we have in the building, thus, we're able to let daylight penetrate well into the building, which, again, creates a much better experience for the employee. With the elevations, as you see, we've got a building that roughly is three-story, but early on, we made every effort to bring a lot of excitement to the building. And so, we wanted to break the facades up with masses along all sides, especially along the front side where we dropped the massing down to a one-story mass, and the intent there was to soften its impact along Grundy. The materials, as Matt mentioned, and we have submitted a sample board, are going to be very striking. It's going to basically be a GFRC precast panel, extensive amount of glazing on the building, and this glazing is protected through a series of sunshades, sunscreens. The masses are going to incorporate a striking material in sort of a rust-red color, which is a rainscreen material, Trespa Meteor. We put a lot of time in looking at these materials because we wanted something that would come across as lasting, something that, you know, as the building, you know, grows old, you don't look at it and say, gee, that building, you know, was done then. So we've really talked a lot about coming up with a solution that has a timeless feel to it, one that both the city and the credit union will be proud of for a long time. Again, there's a, you know, in terms of the massing and, you know, use of the materials, even along this front mass, we've softened the very front part of it with a roof garden, just as you see along the front there. These are some of the renderings that have been developed for the project. As you see, landscaping will be very profuse around the structure itself. A lot of areas here, you're looking at the front entrance, that entry will go into a two-story atrium within the building. So, a lot of excitement. This would be the view that you'd have from the highway. Again, we've broken up the mass with a mass that would incorporate a open stairwell and the elevator. The intent with these areas here is that we see these stairwells acting as sort of like beacons at night, I mean, on a subdued basis, but very exciting-looking. Again, this is from the highway view itself. One of the things working with staff is we are actually proposing that we develop some planters or some along the north side here. That's actually the parking deck that you're looking at, that we're going to be parking on top of the garage. This is the view from Grundy as you're approaching the garage entries. So with that, that's our presentation. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. And if you can just remain up there in the event that this, commissioners, have any questions for the applicant?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Biassadi.
Thank you for your renderings. Those are really well done.
Thank you.
Makes it a lot easier. Thank you.
Any questions at this end? All right. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this project? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to Planning Commission discussion. There is no discussion. Is there a motion? Actually, we have resolutions. We have two resolutions, but a third one that was introduced when staff report was being presented. There was a third resolution.
Chair Johnson, there are actually three resolutions as a part of your staff packet. The first resolution has to do with making a recommendation on the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. The second resolution before you is in regard to making a recommendation to the City Council on replacing the development plan. That's an ordinance, making a recommendation on an ordinance. And the third resolution has to do with making a recommendation on the plan development permit and architectural review permit. You should handle those separately, and then Associate Planner Newbaum made a recommendation that there are a number of staff recommended actions, and our suggestion is if you agree to ask that those be incorporated as part of the conditions of approval that are attached to the resolution associated with the plan development permit and the architectural review permit. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. We're open for a motion.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Biassadi.
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 2016-01.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, actually, is the roll call vote.
Chair Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Mishra?
Aye.
Commissioner Biassadi?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayal?
Aye.
Commissioner Samut?
Aye.
Thank you.
If someone can make a motion to adopt the second resolution?
Through the chair. Commissioner Kayal? To adopt Resolution 2016-02, resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Bruno recommending the City Council approve an ordinance amending and replacing the development plan for 1250 Grundy Lane.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Chair Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Mishra?
Aye.
Commissioner Biassadi?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayal?
Aye.
Commissioner Samut?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then the last one. Is there a motion to adopt the third resolution?
Yeah, through the chair. Propose that we adopt Resolution 2016-03, recommending that City Council approved the plan development permit 12-0-2 and the architectural review permit 16-002.
Second.
And if I could, through the chair, staff had suggested that there be certain addition, additional conditions added. Our planner that made the presentation outlined those recommended conditions, so if you would please, if you could indicate if you're in agreement with including those conditions as part of this action.
I am, yes.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Chair Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Mishra?
Aye.
Commissioner Biassadi?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayal?
Aye.
Commissioner Samut?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, thank you for the presentation. It was excellent. All right, the next item of business is discussion, city staff, and that's to select the Architectural Review Committee for February 11.
This next item has to do with selecting three of your members to work with staff at the February 11 Architecture Review Committee meeting, so I would appreciate three volunteers. Commissioner Biassadi? Two more, please. Commissioner Kayal?
I can be a backup.
And one more firm volunteer, perhaps?
I'm out on Thursdays through the end of February.
Okay. So, Chair Johnson, we'll have you as a backup, and we can check in with other commissioners. Vice Chair Chase, for example, we'll check with him to see if he could, you know, attend as well. So, we've got two-in-one backup, and then we'll check in with Vice Chair Chase as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion from the city? Okay. Planning Commission discussion, we have, it's come to that time of the year that my term has come to an end, and there will be a new chair taking over this amazing position. It is a great position to be in, and I'm happy to entertain a motion.
Through the chair, I'd like to make the motion to appoint Rick Biassadi as the new Planning Commission Chair.
Second.
Second, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Congratulations. Commissioner Biassadi?
I know the job well done.
Well, thank you. And second motion to, motion for Vice Chair.
Yes. Through the chair. So I'd like to make the motion to appoint Marie Kayal as the new Planning Commission Vice Chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, and congratulations as well. All right. And the next item is to adjourn.
So, in terms of the adjournment, I'd like to point out, I'm sure you noticed this, but just to clarify that, we actually have a number of items that are ready to go forward, and we're hoping that you can adjourn this meeting to February 2, which would be the first Tuesday of February. And we're doing that for a couple of reasons. One, that we have about five items that are ready to go, and we'd like to address those, move those forward, and we are anticipating that at your February 16 meeting that we'll be bringing forward the Crossing Hotel. So the idea really is to try to manage our agendas during the month of February. So, as you adjourn tonight, I would appreciate it if you could adjourn this meeting to February 2, please. Thank you.
Right, and that's just a point of information. So it would be the, that meeting will be the first Tuesday of the month.
That is correct. And that'll be held here?
Yes.
On February 2.
Okay. All right, with that, I'll adjourn the meeting.
Great. Thank you.